Oh, I think we're, yeah, I think we're, um, I see it as seven o'clock, so. I call the regular planning commission meeting to order on Thursday, January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two. And if we could all rise and get our respects to the flag, please.
Our presentations to the public, the United States of America, the jury public for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Susan, if you would note the role for us this evening, we have two excused absences with Mr. Hunwick and Mr. Spiz.
Yes, and there is a, there is a.
Thank you. I'd like for a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda dated Thursday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Noel, seconded by Ms. Rose Ross, excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, this next part, we added this in here, right, number five, but I don't think we have anything on it for tonight, do we?
I don't believe there's anybody that has a conflict.
Okay. Well, that's what we checked on, and I wanted to make sure we didn't have that. So we'll go to number six, and I'm looking for approval of the regular planning commission meeting of January sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular planning commission, excuse me, planning commission regular meeting, dated January sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there support?
I second that.
Support, okay. Motion made by Mr. Noel, support by, uh, Mr. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have our public hearing this evening.
First you have public comment.
Oh, oh, I have public comments. Why don't I always skip that for some reason? I don't know why I get, I need, I need to make a point clear. We, we do have public comments on here at this point in time, but it's for items that may not be what is already on tonight's agenda. So unless you're here to speak on something that's not associated with this evening's agenda, uh, I just want that known to someone that's willing to get up yet. Okay, seeing none, and I guess we can go on from public comments to public hearing, which we have on as number eight. And, uh, we have, uh, legal counsel here this evening as our presenter, representing the township, so Mr. Rentrup, if you'd like to get up and present, uh, your presentation to us from the township side, then we'll go from there and open up the public hearing there.
Sounds good. Well, good evening. Thank you. My name is Hans Rentrup. Um, been asked to work on marijuana stuff. I think I saw most of you all last spring when the township first considered regulating marijuana activities. In closing your agenda materials is a WCA zoning ordinance amendment. Purpose of this amendment is to address the locations and conditions under which certain marijuana, this is under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, um, would be allowed in township. As you may recall, uh, there are no, there are four, three different types of marijuana regulations at the state level. There is the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, um, which is known, is the first act of two thousand eight adopted, uh, by right, um, by, uh, by the people. The second is the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, which I'll come and refer to as the facilities act. This, uh, is laws for the sale, for the growing, selling, uh, processing, distribution of medical marijuana, and at a commercial level. And the third is the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. I refer to the recreational act, same, you could refer to as the MRTMA. Uh, this is the complete recreational use of marijuana, allows retail sale, uh, growing, et cetera. What is being considered tonight is a, currently, well, at least that, currently, the township for all practical purposes regulated marijuana to the greatest extent possible. It has not opted into the facilities act, it has not opted into the recreation, to the, opted out of the recreational. So the only act that's allowed under current township ordinances are actions under the rec, uh, the Medical Marijuana Act, the first one. Um, and those are restricted to the extent possible in that if you tend to grow more than twelve plants, it has to done in an industrial district. Medical marijuana has, act has two classifications, uh, patients and patient caregivers. Uh, patient can grow up to twelve plants for themselves, patient caregiver can grow up to twelve plants for his or herself, as well as up to twelve plants for each, by, up to five additional patients, or twelve, seventeen plants. Um, so what the township did last spring was say that if you want to grow more than twelve plants, that's fine, you have to do it in industrial. So tonight, um, you're seeking, the, the consideration is to broaden what is allowed. Um, it, by quick reference, you can look at section six point two-six, page ten of the materials, see exactly what is, kind of quick summary of what's allowed and what's not allowed. Specifically, the proposal is to allow, uh, three types of licenses under the facilities licensing. So under the facilities act, uh, the state of Michigan will issue licenses for five different types of activities. They are growers, secure transporters, provisioning centers, safety compliance facilities, and, uh, processors. And what the consideration is tonight is to allow growers, there's different classes of growers, up to one thousand plants, uh, secure transporters, industrial district, excuse me, first of all, it's a thousand plants, industrial district is a special land use. Secure transporters, industrial district is a special land use. Provisioning centers, some marijuana, uh, in marijuana provision center overlay, um, as a special land use as well. The proposal is not to allow safety compliance facilities or processing centers, uh, which would be allowed under the facilities act at this time, so we're just regulating three out of five potential, uh, types of licenses that could become, to come within the facilities act. Um, it's also not permitting anything that's allowed under the recreational act, except to the extent that personal use of marijuana is permitted, there's a couple exceptions for recreational, but nothing more than you could otherwise allow. To permit these three types of uses, uh, there's two things required. Obviously, we want to look at a zoning ordinance amendment and code amendment to the ordinances. So the township board will be considering a code amendment, it's, uh, February ninth, township board meeting, um, which will address licensing of these facilities. So the state will license it, and then the township will license it under this plan. Obviously, additionally, we want to regulate the location, um, and some of the operational standards, which is what's before you do is a zoning ordinance amendment. Um, the purpose of these amendments is to accommodate, uh, certain demand for commercial marijuana operations, calling no commercial operations allowed within township, uh, to encourage the development of industrial properties that remained undeveloped for certain periods of time, uh, to encourage develop, development and revitalization of certain commercial properties, uh, while preserving safety and se, and security provision, for provision centers. First and foremost, the township's concern should be, and has been expressed to me, the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. So again, we rate, while we're broadening the scope of marijuana use, it is not unlimited, it's going to be quite strictly limited. None of, and none of what would be allowed in recreational, they are allowed in neither processors nor, uh, safety compliance facilities. Kind of goal here is to kind of put a toe in the water and see what's left. The zoning ordinance itself, uh, we have before you tonight, addresses the following. It allows for growers, provisioning centers, and secure transporters, as I mentioned, licensed, that have already been licensed by the state of Michigan. Zones, locations, such uses will be permitted. As noted, requires special use, land use for all. Requires growing more than twelve plants to occur in industrial district, just as it did currently, but now with this, kind of facilities act, those too must be grown in the industrial district. Provisioning centers are required to be, uh, adjacent to M point four, and that's to ensure high visibility and safety concerns, and also be separated by, uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty feet, and the idea behind the separation requirement is not to have them all densely packed into one area, um, and to limit their secondary effects that might be associated with these uses. Privated uses are discussed in it, and basically, I've already summarized those uses, but privated uses are allowed or discussed in the ordinances. Uh, requires special design standards for both growing buildings and provision center. The similar regulations address ass, access, inspection, security, general operational requirements. Sets forth application requirements, um, which of course includes a special land use permit application, as well as a security plan, waste disposal plan, uh, and proof of licensure from the state, uh, seeking operational facilities. So tonight, you know, again, the policy issue for the act to allow, uh, expanded use of marijuana is ultimately to the township's board, but the board has asked, or, somebody Curtis has asked that this, uh, commission look at whether we're on the right track in terms of location and operational standards that these facilities could be located. Uh, it brought my attention, there was a meeting of the ordinance committee earlier today, and there were several questions raised, so, uh, if you want, I'll address those questions as well.
I think it's as good a time as any to point them out, and then, once we have the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, if we've been a commissioner, we'll go into discussion, and they'll have to take their notes accordingly, so, yeah, a good time to point them out, no?
Okay. Uh, the first question that was raised was, and, and thank you, Zach, for bringing this to my attention, uh, was, there was some confusion between dispensary and provisioning center, what's the difference between these? For the sale of marijuana, I like to think of it as three different kinds of categories. Number one would be a retailer, uh, which is a specific license under the, um, recreational act, that's not part of the discussion tonight. The second one would be a provisioning center, which is part of the discussion, is going to be considered, and that is the sale of, uh, of, commercial sale of medical marijuana to medical marijuana patients and caregivers. And the third is what I'm, what I've, I've quote, we've referred to as a dispensary, this is defined in the ordinance. A dispensary is identifying the, what happened prior to the facilities act and prior to the recreational act, which is where caregivers have gotten together and sort of sold, um, things, there was kind of a, a void in the law, so you saw a lot on Eight Mile Road in Detroit, um, they, where they weren't really allowed, really committed, it's kind of clear what, how you got marijuana from a grower to a seller, and they were, you're not supposed to technically make a profit under the Medical Marijuana Act, the original act, um, of course people were, so the, uh, the ordinance tonight does prohibit, uh, dispensaries, which are these kind of unofficial organizations that are associated with medical marijuana caregivers. Provisioning center, that's presented, that's been a lot promoted or proposed, is for medical marijuana, it comes from license, marijuana comes from licensed institutions, it is to be sold to medical patients and caregivers. Does that make sense, or do you think there's a contradiction?
No, I think it makes sense to me, I think the key ingredient was what you just said, it comes from licensed medical marijuana growers.
Correct.
So then that can be, uh, through a commercial sale of medical marijuana, a provisioning center can be provided for the dispersment of that.
Correct.
Okay.
And there are some current carve-outs for allowing some caregivers to do it because of various legislation, I mean, I think I've mentioned this in the past, this is an area of law that is consistently changing, and it changes very rapidly, so there are, and there are still holes in it as well, and I'm adjusting those a little bit maybe as well. There's also a question why, why there was a or between the provisioning center and, uh, and is medical marijuana provisioning center, provisioning center, or provisioning center, is the definition of the guide, and, uh, secure transporters and medic, or medical marijuana secure transporters. The or was really just a formation thing, they had the same thing, um, I just wanted to be clear that, we're talking about a secure transporter, we're talking about a medical marijuana secure transfer and vice versa.
So they are identical?
They are identical.
So that's in definitions?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I, I looked at that and it didn't make sense to me, but I guess.
It, it's probably not a big deal, if, if it does make sense to you, probably, you could probably amend that to change, otherwise the idea was just to be as all inclusive as possible and make sure that it's clear that, the intent was to be more clear, if it wasn't, then perhaps we should just go back to.
Well, either way, I mean, I get it now with what you said, but I just want a clarification on the fact.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
The other question, let's see, was that, uh, this, uh, there was some questions about what is a primary caregiver, what is a qualified patient? Um, you know, those are defined within the proposed zoning ordinance, but it cross-references the state law, so, uh, what the state law defines primary caregiver, or caregiver as, means a person who is at least twenty years of old, and who has agreed to assist with a patient's medical use of marijuana, and who has not been convicted of any felony within the past ten years, and has never been convicted of any felony involving illegal drugs, or a felony that is assault of crime, is defined by section nine of the collective penultimate procedure. So basically, it's an individual who agrees to, uh, grow on behalf of other individuals who cannot do it themselves, so, again, you're going back to the original, it's kind of the medical marijuana act, there's most, I thought it was, in fact, was that we would allow, um, marijuana to be used to help people that had, uh, true medical debilitating conditions, such as, you know, terminal, you know, cancer situations and things like that, stimulated appetite, that they're, and that sort of thing, is so that if a person is undergoing chemotherapy or something like that, might not be able to grow marijuana themselves, they're, you know, someone on their behalf could do so. And that's what the idea behind the caregiver was. Now, what happened was, after the pass of that act, caregiver got seen in dollar bills. Again, like I mentioned before, it was really never intended to be a commercial money-making opportunity, um, but it got turned into one, and so, uh, caregivers kind of now turn into more, a broader term, but as these other, uh, state licensed record, um, entities come to play, using less and less of these types of, uh, small caregivers. A qualified patient means a person who's been diagnosed by a physician as having a debilitating medical condition. A debilitating medical condition has been signed, much debate on what that is, is technically defined as having one or more, uh, cancer, biopoisonous status of human immunodeficiency virus, acquired immunodeficiency syndrome, P T S C, uh, lateral sclerosis, Crohn's disease, Alzheimer's, um, a couple others in here. Also chronic or debilitating either medical condition or its treatment produces one or more of the following, you know, chronic wasting system, uh, syndrome, severe chronic pains, very nauseous, seizures, seizures, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a list of what the debilitating medical conditions are, there's, I will tell you at one time, there were doctors out there that you give a hundred bucks to, and they could give you a debilitating medical condition.
Well, not that rough. I think one of the concerns, well, from one, or maybe one or two or more of the previous P, P, uh, PC members, is that who established that? And that, those rules are established at Lansing, those are not, those were promulgated through the state of Michigan, not from us individually.
Patient and patient caregiver.
So patient to patient caregiving is established at the state level.
Actually, beyond that, because patient and patient caregiver were part of the two thousand eight act, uh, that was approved by the constitution, it was approved by the voters.
Oh.
So it's actually, it's not, it can, it's not, it can't be done, it would take a majority of the legislature, just majority of legislature, and that is definitions.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, we have no, you would contract, have no.
We didn't have, we didn't have as a community control over those definitions. Okay, I just want to point that out.
Um, there was a, a notation that, uh, MO was on the top of table J, and section one E should be changed to MP, yeah, that's true, we were, we'd been judging around the definitions, I caught that beforehand as well, so we'll make note of that in the next.
Yeah, okay.
Section thirty-five B, there was questions to why recreational was not included in marijuana dispensaries, including, uh, marijuana, including medical marijuana dispensaries. Uh, recreational is not included in section, uh, five thirty-five B because it's addressed under marijuana establishments under that. Marijuana establishments are, uh, defined in, in the Michigan Regulation and Taxation Marijuana Act, the recreational act, and that's where, um, you find regulation, recreational limitations. So it is prohibited, I guess in some sense the law is, is prohibited because it's prohibited the whole recreational act in general.
Okay.
There was a question as to, in five thirty-five C, um, if there are multiple qualified patient, qualifying patients who live on, on one lot, it may be limited to twelve plants total on that lot. This is one of those questions which I don't know that I have a definitive answer for. The definition of, uh, uh, is provided by the Medical Marijuana Act states, a qualified patient who's been issued, who possesses a registered identification card, is not subject to arrest for the medical use of marijuana in accordance with this act, provided that twelve plants are kept in an enclosed lock facility. And that's all it says, is to where you can do it, how many you can have, and et cetera. Enclosed lock facility, facility is defined, it can be an outside facility under certain conditions. But, so, that doesn't say whether you can have twelve per lot, or twelve per person, or how that is, there's just, there's no answer there. However, if you look at the recreational act, the recreational act, which may agree, acknowledges not being adopted, but it does say that, um, it says it's lawful to grow twelve plants under the recreational act, not the medical act, within a person's residence, encultate not more than twelve marijuana plants per personal use, provided that no more than twelve marijuana plants are possessed, cultivated, processed on the premises at once. So under the recreational act, which is considered to be the more broad act, it says that you cannot have more than, uh, twelve plants that you're personally growing. So, in other words, if you had, if you and your wife had, or husband had, both wanted to grow marijuana under the recreational act, just for recreational purposes, you're limited to twelve plants. The more restrictive medical marijuana doesn't specifically address that. I would presume the court would say that you're out limited to twelve, but I cannot see that with this definitiveness. Let's see, section, there was a question regarding section five thirty-five D two, uh, about where the measurement is made and to the distances, um, we're going to review that in part, uh, and at the twelve fifty seven, but we think we've got some ideas in how to, you know, address the location in terms of the villagers' portion, um, to try to look for that and make, make those separations requirements.
Just kind of back up one second?
Yeah.
I know you're presenting, don't want to interrupt much. So you're, you're saying that because we're contiguous with, or adjacent to properties within the village, if there's something within that twelve fifty, that's what we'll be discussing for those limitations?
Correct, the twelve, as the language is proposed right now, the twelve hundred and fifty feet separation requirement applies across the.
Okay.
Um, I think the intent was to have it applied within the township.
Only?
And to the jurisdictional township, um, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
With these further questions, who, if, if the commission has, and the claims on them, I'm all ears.
Well, I didn't know for sure what we were going to do with it, and I just, uh, I think the board's going to have to help determine part of that too, when it gets to the township board at that level.
Yeah, it's, it's a policy decision in different, it's another term that really, quite frankly, hasn't been addressed before, I've encountered this type of separation requirement, not just in marijuana, but also in the regulation of alcohol and some other.
Well, we've done it with massage parlor, we've done it with other different marijuana ones, and I think it's just similarities to that. And I get it, but that's within the township itself, and with properties located within the township, and I didn't know how it would correlate with town, excuse me, township properties adjacent to village properties.
If you ask my opinion presently, and the language is presented to you tonight, it would apply to.
Township.
To, to village properties that are adjacent.
Oh, it would.
But I think the intent was not to have that be the case, so we can.
Was, oh, okay, the intent was not that way, okay. Alright, well then, we're not going to clarify that this evening, that's going to be done later on.
I think the board will be looking at that, I think that's the intent, so.
Thank you.
The last question, I think, was, uh, in section six twenty-six C, there was questions how this might conflict with marijuana use table, which does not list the primary caregiver growing as permitted use in recreational districts and gravel away district. As I mentioned before, the, what is permitted of a primary caregiver under the Medical Marijuana Act says, simply says that you can grow up to twelve marijuana plants in enclosed lock facilities per, uh, for, uh, patient grow up to twelve marijuana plants in enclosed lock facility. It does, it, so, the ordinance in one provision says it's allowed in any district, in fact, we, I think if you own the property, you can probably grow it there. Um, I think probably the best thing to do, in my opinion, and, and, I mean, kind of we have a different, we, um, is to, uh, just remove that from the table of this permitting uses. It's not like you can, um, you know, protest anywhere as well, but we don't see protests listed as under the, all the, you know, the uses permitted. So my recommendation, I think, and I guess it's more of a matter of form than substance is just to remove that, um, where, uh, uses permitted under the, uh, Medical Marijuana Act are allowed, because they're not commercial uses, they're just personal use.
Okay.
That's all I have, if there's any questions, I'm happy if you want to add, open the public hearing, and then come back, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you, uh, I think what we'll do is, we will do that, we'll open public hearing to see if there are comments from the public. So, moving forward then, we've had our presentation, um, we'd like to open the, we, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, we open the public hearing, seven twenty-four, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
Support, or sorry, second.
That's Deedamunk, good. Uh, motion made to open the public hearing by Mr. Noel, supported by, uh.
Seconded.
Miss, excuse me, seconded, it does need to say seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by, uh, Ms. Ro, Ro, Ross, excuse me, I'm going to get it right here. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to remind everybody that any public comments need to be addressed to the chair, no questions to the township consultants, planner, or attorney.
Oh, during public comments?
Everything addressed to the chair.
Okay, thank, I, I understand that, but I, thanks for the reminder, because I'm a little green sometimes. So if there is now someone from the public that wants to make comment, please come up and do so with your consent.
Thank you, Chairman Vermer and Commission, I'm Evelyn Archer Patrowski, and I live in the village, and, uh, I just recently saw the map, um, of the proposed, um, provisioning districts, and, um, so short of my, uh, just learning tonight about the twelve hundred and fifty foot separation, which I'm not totally, um, fully understanding, and, uh, the difference between retailer and, uh, provisioning center, um, please go with my comments. So I noticed that on the map, everything is along, uh, M twenty-four, um, and that location, and, um, I'm just wondering, number one, uh, why do we actually need to pursue this? That's my first question. Medical marijuana, yes, it has its place, and I have said this before the village council, and, uh, my friends and neighbors, and people that I've walked the streets and, and asked, in fact, two hundred and forty-three that signed a petition against this in the village in one weekend, but I digress. So, um, medical marijuana does have its place, yes, but, and I've even referred family and friends, you know, to try it for, um, uh, pain, et cetera. But I'm just wondering, do we really want to and have to, as a body, as a township, encourage this? Because considering that in the village, there are certainly like nine locations that, um, have reached out and gotten certificates, and, um, I'm just wondering if the recreational, um, uh, certificates and retailers in the village can sell to, uh, can sell medical marijuana to people who walk in with an ID card, then why do we need to consider this in the township? You know, you do have the choice to do nothing, you don't have to have medical facilities within the marijuana facilities in the township. So that's what I would exhort you to consider, um, especially in light of, um, the village deciding to have, um, unlimited licenses, and, um, there's been a term floated around, like, do we really want to be Little Amsterdam? And so as the township, your, your planning commission recommending to the township, please keep in mind that, uh, we have an image that, uh, we would like to uphold. Think of the traffic on twenty-four, I mean, I think there's something like forty thousand cars daily, if I'm not mistaken, um, and, you know, okay, maybe it's wonderful to fill all of these, um, possibly vacant storefronts, but at what cost? You know, it, it, we, we would have, um, signs all up and down twenty-four, and the gateway at the north and, and the south on M twenty-four, uh, says a lot, um, as far as our image goes, is that really Oxford Dunn right? And, um, you know, does it make sense to replace one business for another? I know that along in, in the village with recreational, uh, Oakland Mobile Marine is a huge business, and, uh, so they're going to be replaced, um, you know, it, it just, many, along Glassby, that will be, and I'm, I'm just wondering, does it make sense along M twenty-four, um, again, at what cost regarding crime? And, um, you know, we talk about safety and security, I, I just wonder, has anyone consulted, you know, the, uh, law enforcement, um, people that we rely on, uh, whether it be, uh, the sheriff's office, um, and of course, the county, at the county commission, board of commissioners meetings, they're always trying to cut back on, uh, the sheriff's budget. And, uh, then we have, of course, the village, um, uh, law enforcement, so I would encourage, um, the commission to, you know, talk to law enforcement about it, and the impact on our U. So I would encourage the commission to, you know, talk to law enforcement about it and the impact on our youth, obviously. The marketing for marijuana is very colorful. And we have a lot of youth that will just happen to find their, find medical marijuana stash someplace in, in the house. So is this really Oxford Dunn Wright? Is this Oxford Strong? I don't know if we want to portray that image. And so I would, I would recommend that you really think twice about your actions. And one of those actions could be doing nothing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there someone else that would like to get up and speak this evening in regards to the public hearing?
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Darby. My husband and I are long Michigan residents and longtime local business owners. And we'd like to, you know, the opportunity to get into the cannabis business. It generates more spending and traffic throughout the area as well, and more well-paying jobs for the residents. We're not sure how the rezoning for the, or the zoning for the township was determined, but it seems somewhat arbitrary. I wonder about clarifying the reasons behind the zoning proposal. Is it spot zoning where you cover up certain locations or are there different, is there a different logic being applied? And also, we have an ideal and thriving retail location that is zoned industrial. And we would like the opportunity to at least be in the running for consideration for a license. As longtime partners and the financial foundation of the area, we believe that we should definitely be among those who give, are given a chance to use our retail and manufacturing expertise to make the most of the opportunity and participate in the further growth of Oxford.
Thank you. Would you do me a favor, tell me your name and.
I'm Mary Beth Darby.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Sorry, I'm just writing for a second. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in regards to this public hearing?
Good evening, Justin Didaskas. Uh, some questions with regards to some of the intent and where we're going with some of the zoning districts and areas. First off, if we look at our neighbors in the village, Orient Township to the north, Lapier, everyone started in the industrial and focused the locations on the industrial as well as supporting like co-locations. So it all starts with growing and then processing the materials to make other ones. So it's really interesting that you just have a small little spot that potentially of the industrial that could be allowed to do retail or co-locate, which as you look at some successful things that have happened, Orient Township, Oxford, others, they all started in industrial. Get the grows and if there was demand, then they looked at further like provisioning in Orient Township and so forth. And they all kept off of M24. Here, we're putting them all on M24 and not including any industrial. Kind of counterintuitive to all the neighbors and what they've done with the zoning and so forth as well as with the 1,000, 1,250-foot buffer, they're literally going to checkerboard in Canada all of M24, filling up existing vacant retail buildings versus putting it industrial and going towards more build-to-suit or more businesses that can co-locate and process. So I think really need to look at, you know, the zoning districts, industrial, allowing the retail in that area, other than the two small little sections. And then really consider, you know, these vast swaths of area all up and down M24 to place them all. Because if you just go to Bay City or any market that has unlimited, you will see, there's not an if, but there's a matter of months before every single one will get full on M24. So just want to really consider what you're thinking. You don't have to really go far to see what the repercussions, what will happen. If you leave it unlimited and open these areas up, small buffers, what will, what will probably turn into on M24?
Just a point of clarity, and we're, and we're in public comment, so I'm not really supposed to do a question and answer. But I tried to put up on the screen, if you looked under marijuana uses, they are already currently permitted in L1 and L2 uses.
But you have to be in the.
So when you say they're not permitted in the industrial districts, I guess I didn't understand what you meant by that.
Well, permitted.
Because they're already permitted by our zoning map.
Well, like eight parcels though.
But if you look behind me, they are permitted in L1 and L2s.
See, yes, but okay, in reality, when we look at the overlay maps of.
That's, that's just the marijuana overlay map, right, okay.
Yeah, so the retail provisioning centers, they can only go in these couple industrial spots.
Correct, all right, I just want to clarify a question on your comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. And then again, just what we've seen, I've been involved, you know, firsthand with some of these on both sides of municipalities. Again, they will fill every single one, and they're not gonna, and then once that happens, no one's going to build you a new building. They're going to kick out existing tenants, go on strip centers, because then they realize there's no value and there's 20 of them up and down M24 as well. So you know, that will come and say, I'm going to rebuild and do a new building, maybe one before they realize, and then the rest won't. If you look at Sturgis, Bay City, and down the line, it's, that's what happens, so.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in regards to this public hearing this evening? I have a limited crowd, I think not. So I'd like to bring this public meeting to a close, and we need a motion to close this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:35, January 27, 2022.
A second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Noel and a second by Mr. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next in line with this public hearing, comments from township consultants and staff. Now Zach, I don't know if you want to make any current comments right now, so.
I can try to answer some of the questions that came up.
Yeah, thank you.
And I've got a rent rope to back me up in case I misspeak.
Okay. He's looking for guidance.
Yeah. So I want to say that the concerns about spot zoning, when you look to the intent of the overlay for the provisioning, there were some very specific criteria that were developed in looking at these. The intent was to encourage development in areas that have traditionally been a challenge for development in the community. Doesn't mean we got them all, but that was kind of part of the basis. Another part of the criteria was having eyeballs on the sites. And so that's why the thought is to have it along 24. Every community does things a little bit differently, and that, that was the genesis from here. Let me see.
Zach, can I point something out real quick? If you look at Oxford Township and you look at our corridors, we don't have much of non-residential properties that are not located on M24.
Correct, yeah.
So because we pass through the village from the south and going north and et cetera the other way, we, we don't have many choices except M24 as opportunities for the properties that are non-residential.
Correct.
So Oxford's kind of limited with their corridor situation, and I think that's important to note, notice, notice also.
Part of the thoughts too were when communities try to figure out how to hand out licenses, it can get very tricky very quickly to figuring out the criteria and reading books, real sticky. And so this was one method for allowing the township to test it out a bit without having to evaluate this one versus that one, because there's going to be a natural limit on how many of these can fit in these limited areas. So again, the idea was to encourage development and redevelopment of areas that are challenging to do. So if you look at that, for example, Area 4, which is the southernmost one, it's on the eastern side of M24, not the western side. And the properties on that side are much narrower, which has made it much more difficult for folks to develop and use when you compare it to the, the sites on the other side, which are much more compatible with, with regular commercial uses. Let's see. There is provision in here limiting the number of signs and the nature of the signs. I believe it's one wall sign per facility with limited information on there, so it, it can't say like the dank palace of whatever it's, the name of the business, the hours, those types of things. And just a reminder that the township board is the ultimate body. Whatever changes get made to the zoning ordinance, they have to do, but they also have to do the corresponding changes to the police power ordinances to opt into the provisioning center and the growing facility. So it's, they, they'll have the ultimate say on this from a policy level. How'd I do?
You're wrong.
Any, any other questions from the commission?
Not on my behalf, I've, I've read this thing so many times, I, I.
You needed some.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. It does get kind of eluded after a while when you read it over and over.
Yeah, and what I'll say is, for the planning commissioners, this is, this is a bit more technical version of ordinances that you get. This is the actual ordinance that amends the ordinance. Oftentimes, what you'll see is just, here's what we want to change, or here's what we add without all this super technical language.
Because we technically had a previous ordinance.
Yep.
And now this is an amendment to that ordinance. And it's, and that's like, if we make a recommendation of the township board, then at that time, if they may can choose to make those decisions, it's up to them at that point.
Correct.
Thanks, we're just trying to do our due diligence right now. I don't think we have any other consultants that we need to confer with right now. So I guess I would like to go into review of the correspondence.
Did you receive any from president?
I don't have any that was written or sent to me or.
We had received any in the office.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. We did not.
No.
Before this evening, I mean. All right, then next is we go to commissioner discussion. So now's your opportunities to start asking questions. We, because we had an ORC meeting, I'll, I'll address this first from this afternoon with Mr. Turner was there and Mr. Noel was there and myself, and we went for almost two and a half hours earlier today looking and discussing all the concerns in regards to a lot of the components of the ordinance. So to kind of freshen up with yourself, Ashley and Cory here, if you have additional concerns, please start talking to us now.
Thank you.
So Ashley will start to deal, and I'm looking at you, okay.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions, so I have been immersed in another role over the last year, working on ordinances for this.
Okay.
I hear, I've heard a lot, both tonight and over the last few days, that we're trying to encourage industrial development, revitalize specific commercial areas, and I can see with the marijuana provisioning overlay zoning, I understand completely why these areas were selected. At the same time, I've also heard we're testing it out, we're dipping our toes in the water. And I have a very real concern that what would happen with allowing through the medical, that you are going to have folks come in and purchase all of these properties and wait until we become recreational. So you're not going to automatically get this reinvestment right away. I see a real issue. You have potentially eight, nine, 10 provisioning centers right around the corner that can sell both recreational and marijuana. It would make sense if we are allowing these buildings on M24 for some investor to come in, buy them and sit on them until we do anything further, if the township decides to do anything further. So this idea of these overlay maps, doing this revitalization, until we do it right or do it all the way, I don't see that true investment. So I have a concern with that. I don't have a concern with the other facilities or where they're going and the special land uses. It's solely with this overlay map and the properties and only doing it for medical. I will say that. I do have a question about the signage that's listed in here about how we have the one wall, one sign. Are we putting ourselves at risk by being more restrictive on the type of signage that we're using for marijuana facilities than any other business?
I would like to make comment, that signage concern came up. And basically, the way it's written within this document that we have in front of us, it's based on typically the signage ordinance that we currently have in place. Now, we are looking at amending the signage ordinance, but because of some criteria that's come down through legislation with signage, we haven't gotten to that point to amend the signage ordinance yet within a community. And we have slightly on hold right now, because we did start with it previously in earlier ORC meetings. So the, the signage ordinance kind of stipulates what we can do with signage with any business within the township right now. This ordinance just kind of is, is only specific to that agreement, and it says so within the ordinance, that's what kind of.
So that's just what I.
So right now, if you look at this ordinance, what we're allowing for signage in here is allowed apparently what we would allow in our signage ordinance.
Okay.
So we didn't contradict it, right?
Okay, I just want to be very clear that they're the same.
Yes, Mr. Noel.
I think, I think to clarify, any other business would have the same opportunity for signage.
Yeah.
As what this ordinance allows.
I just want to make sure it wasn't any more restrictive.
Yeah, that's what I was. It's a good comment, because a lot of people don't catch on what's going on with the signage ordinance currently. And we're in a kind of a holding pattern on that until we figure out what, under the law, with other situations, with other communities, how that's going to work out.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so appreciate your comments. Are there any other PC member comments this evening for discussion? We're open for discussion now, so I guess we need to have and say your piece otherwise. Because the next, you have any, Cory?
Uh, just kind of clarifying the one sign, or the one wall sign. Anyway, if we're revising that now.
We're not revising it now.
Or any changes or anything that are being made to it. What can we do to kind of protect ourselves so we don't have another mural fiasco like we had up at the legacy where it was ask forgiveness instead of permission?
You had to bring that up this evening.
I did. I spent hours in those meetings. And what's to keep somebody from, you know, or getting a rash of people bringing these to the ZBA for an exemption here, exemption here, exemption here?
Well, you can never stop someone for applying for zoning request to amend or appeal what's permitted by the township. If they ask for a variance and they apply for the variance and the variance is established at the board's meeting, then it goes accordingly. We can't take that right away from anybody. They all have that right to ask for a variance. I think what we're alluding to is that building was having things done to it prior to having the actual applications and permits in place. And then they had to go back and ask for variances after the fact. That is not how we like to operate within the township. So due to some of the new conditions of what the township's dealing with with ordinance enforcement, Mr. Curtis, the township supervisor, has tried to step up some of the ordinance enforcement criteria, and they're trying to put some different guideline measures in place for the future, I guess I'll say, of the community to help us so those things may not happen again. And I'll leave it at that, because I can't talk too much about that this evening, because that's a total different issue. But I just happen to know the ordinance enforcement officer and some of the people involved. Now, I, I think if we, are there any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have two things I'd like to say.
All right, sir.
Just want to make this clear, tonight is a, to hear from the public, a public hearing, have the residents of the township come in and talk to us about this. This board is just recommending to the township board, the recommendation only, that there would be a ordinance be, be modified for regulating medical marijuana. The township board then will go their appropriate route in handling that recommendation if needed. And if needed, clarify that, can you clarify the if needed for me in better words than I can use, please? I'm trying to paint the next steps at the board level for this activity.
Right, so as, we're, we're, the board has made. Right, so as we're, we're, the board has to make a decision as to whether it wants to allow licensed facilities within the township. That board's decision to allow them would then be subject to the two regulations, the code for licensing and the zoning ordinance for locations. So you might say we're a little, you're a little ahead of yourselves in some ways by considering this tonight, but the board, you know, has asked to have your recommendation as to the zoning aspect of it. So even if you provide a recommendation to support it, the ordinance has presented, the board can still decide that they wouldn't allow medical marijuana facilities anyway and then it wouldn't go anywhere. So conversely, you know, if you decided not to make or make changes, they can still go around here as well. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for...
Thank you, honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm lucky I had, thinking I was spotted, I almost got spotted.
Mr. Chair, for allowing me to put the...
That's clear, I, I think you clarified that portion for you. Do you have others?
No, sir, I'm ready to prepare to make a motion.
Well, then we are looking for a motion for this evening's...
I have a motion ready. I move to recommend to the township board approval of the proposed amendments to the Charter Township of Oxford Zoning Ordinance Number Sixty-seven A as amended to definitions including medical marijuana definitions, zoning districts, schedule of uses, medical marijuana cultivation buildings, medical marijuana facilities, medical marijuana regulations, parking, and table of comments, table of contents by amending the text of Sections Two Point Two, Sections Three Point Five, Section Five Point Three Five, and Section Six Point Two Six by amending the zoning map.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have support for the motion?
A second.
Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Noel and seconded, seconded by Mr. Bailey. You know what, can we get a roll call on this one?
May I make a point of clarification?
Pardon me?
May I make a point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify that, Mr. Noel, I assume it was your intent to include the edits in terms of, um, changing the definition from MP to MO, marijuana overlay, um, and also the separation requirements from twelve hundred fifty feet period to twelve hundred fifty feet within the jurisdiction of Oxford Township.
Yes.
Thank you.
Susan, did you?
Um, wait a minute, that's an amendment to the motion. So we have to backtrack one second here, Noel.
What I would suggest is that you vote on the motion that's on the floor and then if somebody would like to make a secondary motion with those two edits.
Okay. Well, then I would like, uh, we have the motion made and supported. I would like then to have you call roll.
Noel?
Yes.
I still have you on here. Um, Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now that motion passed, but then to conclude with what Mr. Renthrop just stipulated, did you get the language of that?
I, I need a little refreshing course.
Would you, could you, Hans, could you come back up to the podium, please? So that we'll add this to the record of the motion or amended motion. Do you have it down, Zach?
Yeah, I'm gonna go there if I can, that snuck out.
You got, you got those points of interest?
I think we want to, Zach can correct me if that, uh, we want to amend the, uh, Schedule J under Section Six Point, Three Point Five, the table of uses to go from MO to MP. And that's number one, number two, cut, uh, remove Sec, uh, J four, which is qualifying patients as in any district. As we talked about, that's the idea that it all be, it's kind of permitted anywhere, you're supposed to protest anywhere, so we don't need the license to list that use, just remove that.
And you said remove J four?
Yep, it's still permitted, just we were, as we were putting this together, trying to work at ways to, to help folks.
Which page is that on, J four?
Well, it's just remove J four underneath Schedule J, uh, Schedule J, right?
Qualified patients or primary caregiver, twelve marijuana plants or less.
So those are already addressed elsewhere in the ordinance that says you can do within any jurisdiction because you're allowed to do it with medical marijuana.
And we're gonna change the MO to MP. We had talked earlier to change it to something else. MP's the number?
Yep.
I think I can take it.
And then the one last one, so three changes, those are the two.
We'll go over three if you want to.
And this is the last one, uh, that there should be minimum distance of one thousand two hundred and fifty feet between marijuana provisioning centers located within the township's zoning jurisdiction. It's within the township's zoning jurisdiction in your presentation. And that is to Section Five Point Three Five D two.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, I gotta do this fast or I'm gonna forget all this. Page five of the ordinance, I have J marijuana uses, omit. Number four, for qualifying patients or primary caregiver, twelve marijuana plants or less will be omitted. On the same page, on the same J marijuana usage chart, the MO on the far right-hand side will be changed to MP. And then on Section Five Point Three Five D two, there'll be a minimum of twelve hundred fifty feet regulated by the township zoning justification.
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, thank you.
Within the jurisdiction of the township only, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I got that one right. Okay. So we do have an amendment on the floor for the motion?
It's not an amendment, it's a standalone motion.
Oh, it's a stand, okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Uh, made by Mr. Noel and seconded by Ms... Why do I do this, Ross? Sorry. And I'd like a roll call vote on this Tuesday.
Turner?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Burger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so the vote on the motion has passed and we go to unfinished business? Now, for anybody in the audience that cares for what we're locating, what we're doing? And it's just confirmation of the committee appointments for two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion for clarification on that.
Alright.
Uh, I'd like to confirm that the appointments to the following committees will expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Would be the Economic Development Committee of the Planning Commission for Ed Hunwick, Mike Spitz, and Ashley Ross. The gravel inspection subcommittee of the Township Board would be Tom Berger. The ordinance review committee of the Planning Commission would be Tom Berger, Ed Hunwick, John Noel, and Robert Turner as an alternate. The PUD Committee of the Township Board from Tom Berger, Ed Hunwick. The Village Planning Commission, Chief Township Board PC Representative, John Noel. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals would be Cory Bailey.
Let's, uh, do we have to vote on that? Oh, we do. We have Mr. Noel who made the motion and seconded by Ms. Ross. I have it, it's like, it's all out of my brain. Uh, and I think we can just do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's done, so that's unfinished business. We don't have any new business. Um, now we go into communications and/or committee reports. Do we have any current reports that are available to us at this time? You're, you're bad. Sorry, it's a little joke. Yeah, I get it. Oh, you turned it for me so I could see. I don't know what it is.
Mr. Chair, we love you.
My heart is killing me tonight, I can't help it. Are there any communications in, any, any, we don't have any ORC reports because of everything we just did this evening is what we pretty much discussed today. So the Sand Gravel Committee has none to report that I know of. Um, are there any other reports from Economic Development, which we haven't heard from in a while, but we hopefully in the future we will? And, uh, are there any other people to report? I, I mean, maybe the other two people aren't here, Mr. Hunwick or Mr. Spitz, so they lost their opportunity. So seeing, seeing none of that, uh, we go to planners and engineers reports. Zach, do you have anything you'd like to report this evening?
Last time I mentioned that we got our first couple of zoning permits for new houses north of us here at the manors of Westlake.
Well, done there.
Uh, we have now fifteen more ones, uh, for there. So that's not taking long for houses to start popping up there. Uh, I did also want to say one minor thing just for folks who might be paying attention. There will be some minor tweaks to this when it gets to final form. There needs to be a block to certify it and date and some other knickknacky technical stuff on there. We didn't put it on here now because we didn't want people to get it confused with an officially adopted map. So we just kind of held off on some of those things from this one. There won't be obviously any changes in the borders of the districts, but just some language on there that has to have when it becomes official.
Alright, well that will be for the whole map then? Or just the overlay map? So for clarification?
Yeah, we, we have tried, so we originally tried to just do the overlay on the whole map, but because they're so small, we can't see it.
Yeah, okay.
And so it's likely going to exist is just this overlay.
Right, it's the overlay map.
With, with a note added to the official zoning map that says, see also this overlay.
So would that be as part of the ordinance?
Yep, the maps and the text are part of the ordinance.
Alright, if the township succeeds and goes further. Okay. Alright, thank you, Zach. Uh, seeing none, are there any commissioners' comments this evening that people would like to talk and make? Well, I'll start with you, Mr. Turner. Do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
No, I don't.
Alright. Now Bailey? Ms. Ross? Ross, okay, said it on purpose, no. Do you have, do you have any, Mr. Noel?
This, this was a very difficult preparation for tonight's meeting. A lot of time and effort has been put into it. The ORC met today and we spent, as Tom said, over two and a half hours deliberating over the fine print. Renthrop was very helpful to jump to, jump to answer the questions that we had coming from that meeting. And I hope that this can move forward if that's the board's intent, uh, in the future days.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. I have no comments, uh, this evening, so that concludes our meeting, so we're in adjournment at, uh, eight oh three.